Good evening. I'm going to call this July 24th, 2025 Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We will start out with roll call. Sudarshan Kara.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Isham Elkawad.
Here.
Sayed Safavian.
Here.
Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
Hi, I'm Mark Bachman, and I'm here. Mike Bresko, Commissioner Bresko has an excused absence this evening. And would you, Neil, would you like to introduce yourself real briefly?
There we go. Hello, so my name is Neil. I'm a rising sophomore at Skyline High School, and I'm very excited to listen to today's presentation and hopefully give some input. And yeah, I'm the youth representative, if it's not been clarified before, but yes, thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody have any comments on this evening's agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from our recent July 17th meeting. Anybody have any corrections or comments on the meeting notes from last week? Nope, so we'll call the July 17th meeting notes approved. Next is public comment. Just a reminder, this is three minutes per person. We'll do everybody in the room first and then see if we have anybody online. Go ahead for public comment. And as a reminder, make sure you introduce yourself at the beginning for the public record for the recording.
My name is Richard Johnson, longtime Sammamish resident, occasional dad fly on civic items. My headline tonight is, I'm asking you to think about two bedrooms. So I know you're talking about impact fees tonight. David's going to talk quite a bit, I'm sure, about the impact on the city. I want to just open up a little bit the other part of that, which is the impact on the builders in particular as an incentive. It's both an incentive and our current housing situation presents an opportunity in terms of what gets built in the future. This is closely related to the topic of affordability. Big discussion. Whenever I talk to somebody about affordability, we both nod our heads, but we don't necessarily understand what we're talking about. So I want to talk about one specific aspect of affordability, and I have some data. You know, back in the day, I could send in a picture and they would actually put it up on the display. You could see it. So I'll ask you just to look at this. This chart on the horizontal axis is the number of bedrooms in a housing unit. This is the number of units in the city of Sammamish. So this is two bedrooms, right? It's the land of big houses. I didn't realize personally how dramatic this effect is. The blue bars are owned and the orange bars are rented. We basically have almost no rentals in the city of Sammamish. So, big drop once you get below three-bedroom houses. Starter houses. Doesn't happen in Sammamish. Housing that's quote affordable, meaning somebody who has a household income of $100,000 a year, doesn't happen in Sammamish. As you know, Sammamish is about to embark on a big program of apartment building, which may make us look more like a Redmond. You notice Redmond has a lot more uniformity, and particularly, it has two-bedroom and one-bedroom housing units. They're all rentals. So you may be thinking, cool, this is looking good. We're going to be able to address that with these rental units. And here's the hitch. This is what's going on in the greater King County area from PSRC. I'll just draw your attention to the 2010 data, and it shows that 58% of the apartments that were built in the 2010s are studios or one-bedrooms. This little green here, which you can see is small by comparison, is two bedrooms. There's not much happening. The takeaway is builders now are seeing an incentive to build smaller apartments, which are quote affordable, but they're not really addressing the need that we would like to have for families in our community. Is there anything happening on the owned housing department? Nope, it's not happening there either. Sorry. I got those two backwards. But I think you can see it. Here, this is maybe a little better. In the owned housing department, and unfortunately, PSRC changed the color code, now 50% of the housing that's being built for ownership is four bedrooms or bigger. This little tiny tangerine sliver down here, those are the two-bedroom houses that are being built. So I'm hoping when you're thinking about impact fees, if there's a way you can build in some structure that encourages more two-bedroom units, that would be great. I'm going to apologize. I have to run home because I want to work up some traffic data for you for the next meeting, but I'll be looking at the recording of this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Who's next?
Paul.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney, Sammamish. In support of the two things I sent in last week and the one today, I really believe strongly it's time that we integrate housing targets legislatively set for housing categories A, B, and C into the comp plan. And then I list what those A, B, C, and D's are underneath. I've said that a lot of times. Today I turned in, or to you guys, a 17-page comment section on the Town Center Code. That is a massive document, a lot to unpack. But a couple excerpts from that code here. And these are from me. Let's be crystal clear. Since incorporation, city has planned for its share of regional growth, but has never planned for internal citywide housing imbalance. It's time to do that. On page two of the code, I made an oval where it circled. The city particularly pays attention to when it comes to providing opportunities for affordable housing. I say, uh-uh, change that to the city needs to provide opportunities for both genuine housing affordability, which is market rate, and affordable housing, both over cycle of life. So it's high time to want to begin to alleviate citywide housing imbalance in the city so residents can stay. That'll be mostly market rate. That'll be mostly ownership. That will resolve the short-term structural imbalance in the budget. It'll generate tremendous capital in addition, maybe not all we need, but a heck of a lot, and holistically elevate civic and resident, you know, betterments. So how is that done? Well, in a abridged format, it's a longer version here. We do a rigorous and thorough analysis of how housing supplies meet economic, demographic, and workforce needs over time. Then we contrast those findings against meeting all of the needs, some of the needs, or none of the needs. What are the consequence outcomes of those approaches? Then we set optimal, we as the Kings, we, targets legislatively to meet housing types A, B, and C. That's affordable and two types of market rate. And once those are set on a citywide basis, what's an appropriate amount to inform a town center alternative to begin meeting longstanding shortages in housing? I will just close quickly. Making those things happen should be priority number one, to enrich, sustain, and stay with sweeping, low-impact, net-positive ways that recur, elevate, and endure. Appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Mary?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Mary Victor, Sammamish for 25-plus years. I liked both the public comments before me and definitely believe we should be looking into the things they mentioned and said. I had, the last planning commission showed charts where if you limited Town Center to 2,000, you did 10% affordable, you'd have 1,800 single-family homes that could be built. And the impact of that is about four times for transportation and for school impacts, because if you have multi-car garage and you've got three, four, or five bedrooms, you're going to end up with families, they're going to drive a lot, they're going to have multiple kids, they're going to have multiple cars. Whereas if you have, Don Jaren had sent in some public comment over the last few months, and he said that the city of Sammamish is 20% seniors. So if you take a population of 65,000, I picked a number, 20% is 13,000. So if those people are equity locked in their home, where there's nothing else they can buy, or if they can't do stairs, and they need a smaller unit, and they can't live in the city, they're going to move out. They won't be by their friends, by their family, by their neighborhoods, and there isn't a place for them. And you heard from the developer at one of the city council meetings, he actually does like senior housing and assisted living. So we don't want to fill the whole town center with just that, but I think thinking some of those things is very important. Also, what the first gentleman that spoke said, Richard Johnson, we really do need to try to incent. So if you look, like if you build 3,600 smaller, different, diverse houses, it's really only like 900 with regard to traffic and schools, because they won't have kids. They might not have kids ever, or they might have kids later. Maybe they're not married, maybe they're just working for a while, they don't know. So there isn't any impact to that. And if they live in town center where there is access to bus or transit, you're going to see transit start moving and working. So I think we need to look at those. Also, just for the general public, the chart in the 10-page, just the last three pages of the packet, it doesn't say, like, I think you should cover the whole thing, because we want people to build ADUs or DDU's, which are detached, accelerated housing units. And what are the impact fees for those? Are those not because they're small enough? And then the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, so you can see the whole scope so people can see. Because I think if they can see the chart, and they can see where it breaks, just like the developers, he's trying to get to build two bedrooms, I think is very good. I also know in Montana, where I grew up, and I own property, and there's a lot of development going on there, a two-bedroom house or a two-bedroom unit is more rentable and affordable. To do it all for one bedroom is sometimes hard. That way you can have a roommate or a friend that you live with, and then as soon as it gets to the three bedrooms, then it's too expensive. So two bedrooms is a really good thing to look at. So I think just the more simple that you write it, you make it look like, yeah, if you're just going to continue building big, single-family homes, you're going to pay a lot of impact fees, because they need to be subsidized. And I don't have time, but I'll give the rest to the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Lena, do we have anyone online?
No comment, doesn't line.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Okay, let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which is a presentation on infrastructure and impact fees. I don't know, David is the shoe starting out?
This is me starting out, and I do need to locate my screen, so bear with me for just a minute.
So I failed again to have a good dad joke available when there's a pause in the meeting. I used to be good doing that, but...
All right. Good evening, Commission. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. With me this evening, I have Audrey Starsee, our Public Works Director. Two of us will be providing a presentation this evening on infrastructure and impact fees in the city. The purpose of this presentation is to provide foundation for the upcoming work that the commission will be doing on resetting our impact fees as a city. We will be having a workshop on August 7th, where we'll receive presentation from the city's consultant, who is supporting the update of the impact fees. And they'll be, following that, there'll be a public hearing planned in September on proposed impact fees before it gets transitioned to the city council for their consideration of adoption of updated impact fees. Before I get started, I wanted to note that there are some interchangeable terms used in this presentation. Transportation, roads, and streets generally all mean the same thing. There are different places and different codes or standards or state laws that say transportation, roads, or streets, but really, they mean the same thing. So don't be too confused by that. Don't overthink it. It just is the same topic. First, providing a little bit of background around constitutional requirements as it relates to what type of burden we as a city can place on a developer to make improvements to the city's infrastructure along with development. There is, there are two relatively famous Supreme Court cases called Nolan and Dolan, and these cases have resulted in providing case law direction to cities as to how far they can go in requiring developers to make improvements to city infrastructure alongside development. There are two things that come from these cases, a nexus and proportionality. The nexus refers to a direct and substantial connection between the required improvement or the fee and the actual impact that development is causing. And proportionality refers to the size or the scale of the improvement or the fee that is paid by the developer as it relates to the burden, or I guess the impact that it causes. So there are some other cases that have come from these cases, and the courts have ruled the same way, that there are, you need to show that the fee that you're imposing on development or requiring of development is related to the actual scale of the impact that development is causing. You cannot require new development to fix existing problems, and you cannot require new development to fix or build out infrastructure in anticipation of further development. It has to be related to the actual development at hand. Another piece of background is the foundation for impact fees, and that is the city's comprehensive plan. One of the reasons why we are going through this update of the city's impact fees is because we now have a new comprehensive plan in place. And with that, we have reset the city's levels of service as part of the capital facilities and utilities element in the comprehensive plan. We also now have a transportation master plan that supports the city's transportation element of the comprehensive plan. We also have an updated parks, recreation, and open space plan that supports the parks element of the comprehensive plan. And along with those, we need to reassess what the cost of supporting the level of service in the city and maintaining the level of service in the city is on new development. So there's a calculation that goes along with that, and our consultant is currently finalizing those numbers in order for us to bring those to you on August 7th and provide an overview of how that calculation works and what their conclusion was. So what exactly are impact fees? They're a one-time charge on new development. They're used to fund capital infrastructure projects and ensure new development pays its proportional share of building out public infrastructure. It's proportional to the impact of development, again, going back to the nexus and proportionality. It's collected at the time of building permit issuance. There are some nuances there. A developer can, under state law, choose to defer payment of impact fees until much later in the process when the home is sold. That's because there are different types of developers and different scenarios under which developers are operating. Some of them are operating off cash and have the ability to pay the impact fees upfront. Some developers are operating off of credit, and they don't have the cash available. They want to wait till that home is sold, and at the point of escrow or closing of that home, the impact fee is then paid. And again, this just helps us ensure that growth pays its fair share without burdening existing residents. This graphic, we thought, really did a good job of showing how impact fees fit in. It's from a city in Texas. Cities across the country collect impact fees. It's not unique to Sammamish or the state of Washington. You can see here in this graphic that company X wants to turn a vacant lot into a restaurant. Developer Y is developing a new subdivision. These developers or companies pay impact fees in order to respond to increased demands on infrastructure. These fees add to local funds and are bundled with local funds that are then used to execute and deliver infrastructure projects in the city that respond to needs to meet levels of service. So why are we updating the city's impact fees? I went over that a little bit, but there are some other reasons. Our impact fees have not been updated since 2015. It's happened quite some time. It's really time to revisit them. Adoption of the new comprehensive plan, like I said, requires recalibration. The impact fee update is part of the implementation of the comp plan. This is something that you would typically do following a comprehensive plan update. And it needs to be legally defensible under the nexus and proportionality context. So we do want to make sure that we're studying the new costs and the new levels of service and that those are updated accordingly. Let's see. There's also a state requirement for us to update our impact fees. Senate Bill 5258 from 2023 requires a scaling of residential impact fees. We talked about this a little bit in the agenda bill for this evening. You did hear from the, one of the public commenters this evening about that and their interest in trying to use this as a tool to incentivize or influence developers and what types of units they choose. That's a really, I think, relevant and important concept. Fees need to vary under this bill by square footage, bedrooms, or trip generation. And again, we think that these could encourage smaller or more affordable housing units. And, you know, again, going back to, we need to make sure we're compliant with our formulas. I also want to note that one of the types of impact fees we'll get into for just a minute here this evening, it's not really one that we do much on, is the school impact fees. The city only has a peripheral role in how school impact fees are calculated and developed. So school districts are working with King County to develop a formula for how school districts will respond to SB 5258. Will then be asked to adopt by reference what the school districts choose to use for their purpose. So just quickly, the categories of impact fees currently collected by the city. We have, for parks, you can see what we collect for single-family and for multifamily, and for street, or roads, or transportation. This is what you see for single-family townhouse units and multifamily units. These are important to note that there are these different categories. Parks are different than street. There is an additional category there, and that is going to play out here in another slide you'll see here in a minute. So I want you to draw your attention to that. So these are the school district fees, and I want to, again, highlight that the city has a very limited role in this. Sammamish does have a unique formula compared to other cities, our adjacent and regional cities in King County. Most cities have a 50% local share multiplier. We have a 25% local share multiplier, which was set by the city council a couple of years ago. And what that means is that we collect more impact fees on behalf of the school district than other cities do. Our impact fee for school impact fees is higher in Sammamish than it is in other cities. So these are the current impact fees that are set for 2025. These are the proposed impact fees for incoming 2026. And you can see that this really reflects the forecast of growth in the different school district areas. In the Snoqualmie Valley School District, you're seeing a lot more growth in terms of residential units than in some of the other areas, whereas the Lake Washington District, the numbers, the actual need for additional infrastructure is much lower, and in the Issaquah District, it is zero. So there is no proposed impact fee in the Issaquah School District for 2026. Again, we end up, we calculate these, as this says here, based on costs calculated with each respective school district's capital facilities plan, and that's converted using the city's impact fee formula that is codified. So beyond that, we don't really have much of a role in developing their capital facilities plans. We take the information that their school boards end up adopting and provide us, and we simply adopt it by reference and collect the fee on behalf of the district. So moving on, the calculation and collection, you know, is generally collected with construction permits. It's calculated at the point of collection. This is an interesting thing, because if a developer is seeing that they're in the process of development permit, and they see that a city is proposing, or a school district is proposing to change the impact fee, they generally will attempt, and it's going to go up, they then generally will attempt to pay it. But if they're seeing it going down, then they generally will defer it. So it really is calculated at the point of collection. It's required for new development. Existing units are exempt, and I think this is an important point as well. If you were doing, say, a four-lot short plat on an existing parcel that had an existing home, and you were tearing down that home, you would only be paying it on three lots. Collection can be, again, accelerated or deferred, and it is adjustable for affordable units. And one important point that I want to make sure everyone's aware of is the city does work really hard to collect partial impact fees for unincorporated areas outside and adjoining the city. We have had many projects that have happened just outside the city in King County, where we have worked with the developer and using different tools to receive impact fees and also to have the developer build improvements to the network through mitigation requirements. So we do actively pursue those. It's not always easy, but we are successful in that. So something that I have appreciated about Sammamish is that they're willing to go after those. Some examples, this is an example, a new home off 244th within the city. So you'd be paying the Snoqualmie Valley District fee, Parks impact fee, Roads impact fee. The total would be $36,000 in an impact fee for a new home. Another example is a Newtown Center apartment. You'd be paying Lake Washington School, no Lake Washington School District fee, be paying a Parks fee for a multifamily unit, a Roads fee for a multifamily unit, and that would end up with a $13,000 impact fee. Example for a Newtown Center townhome at 80% AMI affordable. So this would be reduced by 80%, which is allowed by our code, and you can see how that would bring down the rate to about five- that would bring down the rate to about $5,000 versus about $24,000 if you were paying it without the reduction. This slide shows impact revenue, impact fee revenue by year, and this goes back to the note I wanted you to carry about how there are different fee categories for different, for parks versus traffic. So you could see that the graphs are not linear, that the categories grow disproportionately from year to year, and this in part is due to the types of units that are being built and the impact fees being collected. But you can see that generally, when you have a year where there are many units being brought online, and remember that permitting takes many years, oftentimes, you know, five to 10 years to get from the point of entitlement to the point where people show up, that the impact fees are generally paid around when people show up. So this is reflective also of the number of units that were being brought online in those years. This also, one of the reasons also why these bars are not linear to each other is because some of the other factors, like the impact fees that we collected for areas that are not in the city, like the fees in the unincorporated King County areas. So, but these are the numbers that you can see. There were some years where growth slowed, particularly 2021. And if growth picks up again and more units are brought online, then according to the calculated fee, that the numbers would, the amount would go up. So how are impact fees used? What can we use the revenues for? Land acquisition, design, improvements to existing infrastructure and amenities, construction of new infrastructure and amenities? We'll say this again down the line, but what you can't use it for is maintenance. That is not something that impact fees will allow. So key takeaways before we jump into infrastructure planning and CIP work is, impact fees are a charge imposed on new development projects. They're used to help funds, to help the city fund improvements to transportation and parks, infrastructure, calibrated with additional demand created by new growth and development, and they're meant to support a delivery of infrastructure concurrent with development. And I think this is a really important point, is that state law defines concurrent with development as either the improvements being in place at the time of development, or that a financial commitment is in place to complete the improvements within six years. So, you know, we do hear public comment often about not having adequate infrastructure in place for development. I've been hearing this for years, and not just in Sammamish, in other cities I've worked in. But it is important to note that the state law does dictate that the way in which infrastructure is planned for, designed and delivered, is concurrent with development, and it is defined in state law. So that is an important point that I think we should remember as we have conversations around planning for development. With that, I'll turn it over to Audrey, who will jump into planning.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Commission. So we have a handful of slides. We'd like to go over planning for transportation infrastructure, and this is really rooted in our transportation master plan in terms of implementing our goals and policies through strategy. We'll talk a little bit about the mitigation and impacts of development and all the tools that are available to agencies to utilize, as well as how we invest those in the right infrastructure at the right time. Okay, next slide, please. So our transportation master plan, as you know, it reflects the community's input. It aligns with all of our state, regional, and county planning, and we have a slide for that following this one. It sets the goals and policies that is based on the city's vision that is in our comprehensive plan, and it plans potential impacts from growth through 2044 and develops, of course, implementation strategies. We'll get into some of those in a few slides. So this next slide hopefully is a quick visual reference. It's very complex, but hopefully this provides a very high-level overview. The transportation master plan has many components of it, but we selected a handful to walk through tonight. So of course, if we start at the top of the slide in the green box, there's some of those regional plans that we were talking about. Of course, state law, our GMA, Puget Sound Regional Council, countywide planning policies, et cetera, of course, help us create our comprehensive plan, which was just adopted last year. As David mentioned, the transportation element is our transportation master plan, and some highlighted in bold are some of the kind of key things from that master plan that we'll talk through tonight. That master plan sets our policies, which indicate our level of service for transportation, our impact fees, our infrastructure, and then how we can mitigate. That in turn sets our code, which includes things like our public work standards, again, our level of service, concurrency, and impact fees. There's many implementation strategies that align with policies in that plan, including how we review projects, especially with a focus on multimodal improvements. We'll go through those four development review tools, but at a high level, there's the concurrency evaluation process, a traffic impact analysis, or TIA, transportation impact fees, also very commonly known as street impact fees or traffic impact fees, and of course, our SEPA mitigation as a tool that we can implement as well. And finally, infrastructure planning. The last third of my presentation, we'll get into a little bit about how we plan for infrastructure over 20 years and six years. We'll go through all of these, but these are our four goals that are in the transportation master plan. And they're really about supporting growth by focusing on key elements of moving people in the city as well as in the region by creating a very efficient multimodal transportation network. That's done through investing in different systems that offer greater mobility, as well as a priority for the city, of course, is to maintain what we have, our existing infrastructure, to preserve that and operate it in a safe, safe and functional state, and of course, design and manage our system to minimize the negative impacts of transportation on the natural environment. This particular goal and policies underneath it really tie in our climate action plan and that element of the transportation, or the comprehensive plan as well. We just pulled a handful of policies. I won't go through all of these. These can be found, of course, in our comprehensive plan and our transportation master plan, but these policies really guide a lot of what we'll be talking with you tonight about, and it really is how we approach a lot of our work. Next slide. Okay, so I talked about four tools. Before we get into each tool, there's, the review process is very complex. There's a lot of different components and moving pieces to it. Applications are reviewed by our planning team, our development review engineering team, our traffic engineering team, our inspectors, and our maintenance teams also take a look at development applications that are applicable so that we could make sure that infrastructure will work for maintenance as well. So it's, no, you're fine. It is like these very detailed projects that our experts spend a lot of time doing so that we have the best infrastructure for the community. Of course, in their review, they're adhering to codes and standards, our city codes and environmental laws, as well as state and national requirements. Frontage improvements is a requirement for most applications. Those are looked at, of course, with safety perspective, but they need to meet our standards for roadway width, sidewalk, bike lanes, et cetera. Our traffic impacts and mitigation, both in the immediate vicinity of the development application as well as our greater transportation system. Our engineering teams look at site distance, lane configuration, driveway grades, all of those details, so that all those things combined make sure that we have a very efficient system. And of course, the use of our street and wideways. It's a separate process, but often a very critical process during the review of development So these are just some of the phases. I think we would need 10 slides to really convey the details that goes into this. But at a very high level, when a project is first proposed for us to take a look at, our teams meet with the developer, the applicant, and pre-application services. One of the first things that happens in a review process is a concurrency review. Developer submits their concurrency application, they pay fees. Those fees cover the process for staff to review those, the application. They're reviewed and tested in the order that they are received. If the application passes concurrency, capacity is reserved, and a certificate is issued that's valid for 180 days. When we move into the land use action and review, a traffic impact analysis, or TIA, can be, that work is evaluated, again, looking at those immediate and greater impacts and mitigation requirements can come from that work as well. Of course, along the way, we're looking at a whole lot of other things, like stormwater and utilities and everything else. Once we're looking at site permit review, again, more of that detailed work that comes in with frontage improvements, utilities, the grades, driveway grades, lighting, stormwater with traffic, we're also looking at codes, regulations, all of those details. The right-of-way permit review, we're really looking at the temporary impacts during construction phase and things like traffic control plans and how the community may be impacted during construction and some mitigation that may be required. And finally, the permit or permits are issued. Just as a note, as David mentioned, I think, earlier, those impact fees have to be paid prior to permit issuance by the city. Okay. Hopefully, this is a very high level comparing two different, two different pieces. So that traffic impact analysis that I was talking about is required for certain conditions for any development that generates more than 10 trips in a peak hour. It's a detailed analysis of that development's impact on the road network. It's a very integral part of the development review process that our teams work very diligently on. It looks at all kinds of different items, like level of service, access, accessibility. It looks at all modes of transportation, road safety, et cetera, and that produces a mitigation plan that they can either implement the necessary transportation improvements or contribute their fair share of the cost for those improvements, or if nothing is necessary, that's also identified if the LOS is acceptable. SEPA mitigation is also a tool that agencies can utilize. There's SEPA checklists, and applicants can put in mitigation measures in place to address probable significant impacts. We have several examples of those as well. And then that helps determine if an environmental impact statement or EIS needs to be prepared. So many mitigation measures, we included some here that are gone, not transportation-related, but some commons things, of course, in addition to pedestrian and vehicle travel, things like tree retention and different, you know, stormwater, water quality features in habitat. This all needs to happen before permit review or issuance.
Can we have some of that?
Yes, please.
So a good example of SEPA mitigation, so the proposed Issaquah School District new high-low school campus down at Providence Heights on the south end of 228th here is not a project that's happening in the city. The city of Issaquah is permitting that. The city of Issaquah was in review of the traffic impact analysis. However, the city of Sammamish was able to provide comment and coordinate with the school district and the city of Issaquah under SEPA, and as a result of that, the city of Sammamish was able to secure several mitigation measures that apply to that school and how it impacts the city's transportation network. And those projects then are required to be complete before that new school opens, whatever timeline they're on. No comment on that right now, but I just wanted to highlight that even when this, you know, there are, SEPA has a special tool to identify where there might be impacts and then identify what the solutions might be to that. So that's a good example of how SEPA could be used.
Thank you. Perfect. Hopefully, this is meant to serve as a reference. We often get questions about concurrency and, again, impact fees that seem to have several different names, traffic, transportation, or street, sometimes road impact fees. So there's purpose to each, and they do work together. So concurrency ensures that new developments do not cause transportation facility levels of service to decline below standards. That's the case with all impact fees, or I'm sorry, with concurrency, with impact fees ensures the development pays its proportionate share of that impact, as David was talking about. There's different stages in which they apply. As I mentioned before, concurrency is the first step in the permitting process. Then next is the, the impact fees are calculated and collected prior to final permit issuances, and of course, adjusted to our current adopted fee rate for that year. All new developments, there's very few exemptions that are on the bottom of the screen there have to go through these processes, and impact fees are collected from all new developments, like I said, except for a handful here.
Are you ready?
You're fine? Okay. And so how are those fees utilized and incorporated into capital improvement project planning? So this is meant to represent the life cycle of a particular asset. I think we utilize, I can't remember if it was a sidewalk or a road, but, you know, there's a lot of work that agencies do in terms of programmatic planning for, you know, a set of asset or infrastructure, such as a road or sidewalk, that often occurs through the vision and goals and policies first, through our programmatic plans, like our comprehensive plan, transportation master plan. Those, of course, are aligned, or our six-year capital plans are aligned with those master plans. Those are also known as functional plans. And of course, then we need to have allocated dollars from our budget to actually go through design and construction phases as we kind of work our way around this pie graph. Preliminary design is one of our first phases. We often will go through an alternatives analysis with a project to determine the best solution for that particular infrastructure or project. It's a really critical pathway, often referred to also as a feasibility study, so that we get to the right, right infrastructure. Design and construction phase are honestly very fun, and they're often the shortest phases. So design also includes any property or right-of-way acquisition and our own permitting process that we need to apply for permits, both for our own permits as well as state, state, regional, or federal permits. Construction phase is often the fastest. Of course, we get the most calls during construction phase, but that's, right now, a great example is Lewis Thompson Road Project is under construction. That has about an 18-month build that it's on schedule for, but the design phase took longer than that, and of course, we've been planning for it since about 2017, 2018. As those projects are finished, there's a warranty period before the developer has to come back and repair things if they didn't quite, there's any issues in that first warranty period, and then those are truly ours. And of course, as that asset wears over time, we start, we have minor repairs, and at some point, we move into a rehabilitation phase where there's more efforts that are put towards that asset, and then, of course, as that lifecycle of that asset starts to phase out, we look at replacing that. Next slide. So capital planning is critical. It's really important that our capital plans align with the community goals and service expectations. This infrastructure is the community's. It improves trust and transparency. It identifies our forecasted capital expenditures, revenue sources, including impact fees and any funding gaps. Of course, we implement those goals of planning that I already went over, and it mitigates risk, improves public safety. A lot of our projects, especially transportation, have safety elements in them, and it prioritizes our funding over the next six years. Another graph of just kind of how that city comprehensive plan ends up influencing our transportation master plan. We also have a storm and surface water comprehensive plan. Within those plans, they have goals, strategies, programs, and projects. Those are scored and evaluated by our team and placed into our six-year capital plan. Funding is allocated in our two-year budget that gives us authority to proceed with the project, and then that project begins design and construction phase. The dark blue box on the left-hand side of your screen is a really common way that projects start. We've had several projects that have started from a My Sammamish request. Staff observation over time, of course, there's level of service projects, and as we plan for assets to be replaced, those are also some of our common projects that we see. So we're often asked how we prioritize projects. There's always a lot. We always would love more funding partnerships for a lot of our projects, which we are very thankful to get. But we have to prioritize our projects and focus our projects so that we are investing in, like I said, the right infrastructure at the right time. We have a criteria, it's a 100-point system that we utilize for our transportation projects and how we score those. When a project is first introduced, our engineering team looks at a lot of things, but first, they look about the feasibility of the project, of course, location, and the need for the project is reviewed, especially if it's an asset that may be failing in terms of predicting the timing, so that ideally, we're replacing that asset the day before it fails. They look at risk, and they prepare our conceptual engineering estimates so we could start to plan the phasing and feasibility of that project so we can see how we could incorporate it into the six-year window or beyond. If that project scores high enough, it is placed into our six-year capital plan. If that project scores high enough, it is placed into our six-year capital plan. So we have several ways that we look at our capital plan. Every project receives the same scoring, except for projects that are part of our sidewalk gap and non-motorized program, as those are projects that are relatively similar projects. They have their own scoring criteria. We are evaluating that criteria with the bike and pedestrian mobility plan that will likely be updated in the upcoming year. These highlight several of our programs. They range from our streetlight enhancement program through school zone safety and transit enhancement. Of course, pavement management is a very large program for the city. We also have, so all of the projects that are placed within a program are very similar. Typically, they are smaller in scale in terms of expenditures. Our sidewalk program, for example, is, we have a budget of about $400,000 a year. Typically, those are gap projects that we can design and build in one year, or we can bundle them and design two in one year and deliver, you know, to the next year. So each one of those has a little bit different criteria within the program, but all the projects that are placed into a category that are larger projects have that same criteria that I was just talking about. So we have four categories on our transportation plan right now. We will likely be recommending another one as we're developing our citywide CIP. Our current categories are traffic, safety, and non-motorized improvements, our connection projects, corridor improvements, and, of course, regional projects that are unfunded, but very important to include on our plan. We are working on our next citywide CIP, so our 2026 through 2031. That'll be included in our budget, and that'll be available for the community to look at and, of course, presented to council this fall, so very excited about that. Once a project is placed into the budget, as I said before, that funding is allocated for that particular phase during that two-year cycle, and we can continue or start work on the project depending on the phase of the project. This is a lot of information, so we provided a few links if you want to find out and learn a little bit more about some of the different categories of things that I spoke to you about today. They are kind of color-coded, so the first three boxes in that table are all some of our larger plans that we were talking about, the transportation master plan, the bike and pedestrian mobility plan, which is in progress. That'll be incorporated into the transportation master plan update that we're also working on. Our recently adopted transit plan is also available, excuse me, on our website, and, of course, all of our capital plans, there's links right there. We are working on a city website for our upcoming citywide CIP. If you're interested in learning about a specific project that we are working on or planning, they all have webpages happy to provide those links for anyone that's interested in learning more about the project, and there's some links here for construction phase as well as maintenance phase as well. If you would like to learn more about the transportation master plan, concurrency or level of service, or our vision, there's specific chapters here. The link should take you right to the transportation master plan. Our teams are also available to answer any questions as well. Our current standards, our public work standards, which, you know, describe our engineering details for how infrastructure is built, our current standards are almost 10 years old, so a very big project for the department this year is updating those standards, so that project just started. I believe that scope of work is actually just recently advertised, so very excited about that work, but our current standards are online as well, and, of course, our code. And with that, that was a lot, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Yeah, that was quite a bit. Glad to see a picture. I guess we'll just go around and maybe start with you, John. No, I started with you last time, didn't I? Maybe I should. Maybe I should not pick on you this time. Maybe I'll start on this side with Asham. Why don't you go ahead, Asham? What questions do you have?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'll give you a minute to think about it. Sayed, what questions do you have?
Number of questions. Let me start with the time, the impact fee and concurrency to the CIP. As you know, Audrey, there's always an argument when you look at the CIP, even though the CIP is a list of the transportation projects, but there are a number of projects that are in CIP that either not funded or partially funded. So how do you tie that into the discussion as far as determining the impact fee and how much the developer has to contribute to the list of the project, as some of them may not happen or partially happen during the next six years?
Okay. That's a great question. I think that, and we will likely be making a recommendation to change a little bit of the structure of our capital plan that will likely just include our funded projects. We only had one project on this year's capital plan that was partially funded. We were hoping for a grant that unfortunately didn't come in, but our consultant is working with DKS. So FCS Group, who is working on the impact fee, is working with DKS, our on-call transportation planners, to make sure and review all of the projects. So they have all of our project lists, all of our estimates and everything else, so that will go into the very complex complication, or, I'm sorry, equation that they're going to bring, I'm sure, some of that methodology in August of what goes into the denominator and numerator essentially for the impact fee.
What is the city's experience with the legal challenge on these arguments? That, hey, I'm a developer, and you want me to pay portion towards the six-year plan, and the six-year plan is not fully funded?
We've not been challenged on impact fees that I'm aware of.
Let's talk about the school districts. David, you mentioned about the school districts, some of them, their fees is substantial. Is there any nexus between the impact fee that a school district collects and also the transportation, infrastructure improvements that the city needs within the immediate vicinity of the school district? Can you tie into that and pull some funding from that?
So the only connection that I could make, just recently, we worked, for example, on the Eastlake High School expansion project, and as part of that, they were required to do a TIA or something along those lines. I can't remember exactly what the, I get confused with these different documents. I'm not a transportation engineer, so, but I do know that one of the things our transportation engineering staff did look at was what impact that might have on the city's transportation system. And what then would happen is the school district could be on the hook to make network improvements in response to its desire to build a new school, expand a school, make changes in its programming. Those are things that are considered. So some of the dollars, in theory, that are collected through school impact fees are then used to support any school improvements that are made, including any of the requirements that the school district has, any of the requirements that the city has on the school district to make improvements to the city's transportation network. I hope that made sense. That was a lot, but that's the connection that I see.
So you're looking at case by case. You're not necessarily having a policy that any time that a school district's going through the process of adopting their plan, you should be sending a list of the potential improvement within the immediate vicinity. For instance, sidewalk, for instance, school zone, safety, crosswalks, things that are related to that, particularly in the light of the fact that the city is very much into multi-modalism and all that, so.
That just depends on if the school district itself is counting on that fee or that improvement to be made as part of those projects that they have in their own capital improvement plan, right? So the school district is the one that comes up with its capital improvement needs. The school district is the one that cost estimates those capital improvement needs and rolls them up into their capital improvements plan, and it depends if the school district is forecasting that there would be transportation network or improvements made at the city. Schools don't pay impact fees. However, if a school is, like the Issaquah School District, for example, building a new school at Providence Heights, and that school necessitates making transportation network improvements, road improvements, sidewalks, stoplights, all the things that go along with servicing that school and making sure that the city's, whether it's Issaquah or Samamish, his level of service is not brought down by the school, then they would have to pay that as part of that project. So what I'm saying is unless the school district has included it as part of its cost for those capital improvements, then there is really no other connection.
I didn't hear that much about, you're talking about mostly residential. How about the commercial activities? Are we going to be hearing a little bit more about the impact fees related to the commercial, retail, office, and so forth? Why only residential?
Yes, so my understanding is that we don't collect impact fees for...
You don't? For commercial?
I'd have to go look at the fee schedule, but I'm not, yeah. Usually, that's done through SEPA mitigation fees.
Oh, that's news to me. Frontage improvement versus impact fees. Is the frontage improvement is going to be calculated towards or in lieu of?
Frontage improvements are required by, I think it's chapter seven of our public work standards, which is in our code.
So a developer spends so much money for the frontage improvement in front of his or her property, can he or she deduct that portion of cost from the impact fee, or this would be in addition?
Good question. I would want to check with our development review engineers.
There is different policies on that, that's what I'm asking.
Just to double check. Yeah, it's a good question.
I have more questions, but I wanted to have other people do.
Wait, Audrey.
One of the problems of following Sayed is that he takes a lot of the questions that is in your mind. So I had some questions about this. So you mentioned that it's a six-year limit. I saw that just after the Nolan Dolan slide that was there. So help me understand this thing. If there's, if, when Lake Washington School District does some planning and comes to it, and there's some money that comes out of these impact fees that goes towards them, and if there's something more to be done, if they figure out that, yes, we've had more people come in because of all the number of residents who moved into the city and other things, so we're going to build another building next to Eastlake High School, and that's a capital funding that we'll have to add because we did not anticipate that there's going to be this much, or whatever it was. If something like that comes up, does that money come out of the impact fees? Where do they go? Or does that go into a bond or levy, and then the city gets to vote on it? I'm trying to find out how does, how do those costs and the impact fees line up?
So the schools don't pay the transportation or traffic impact fees, but then when they propose their, they submit their application to the city for review, right? There's, and we can utilize those other tools, like a TIA, the traffic impact analysis, they have to pass concurrency. So if they're changing the use of their property and expanding, then this is all reviewed through their application process? Was that...
Yeah. Yeah, so I want to make sure that we're all clear that the city serves as an agent on behalf of the school districts to collect their impact fees, right? That's one category. And all we do is, at the front counter, the permit center, when we issue a permit, we collect whatever the fee is based on the adopted fee schedule on behalf of them, and we then transmit those fees to the school district.
Yeah.
They then take those and put them, those fees that they collect, that we collect for them, that we transmit to them, into their budget, and that goes into their capital improvement budget that they then spend to make those improvements. Now, if there were more students showing up than what they forecasted, they redo their forecast every year, so their fees would reflect that the following year.
And hence, their dip into the capital, sorry, into the impact fees bucket would also change?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, or there would be, so there's multiple ways, you know, and it's, there's a really great presentation that the Lake Washington School District did back in February of this year as they were going through development of their capitals facilities plan for this year. And as part of that, they walk through how they do all their forecasting, how they spend the dollars that they bring in, and the tools that they have to address inflow and, you know, in migration, out migration, natural burst, natural growth, all the things that are happening with their cohort grades as they move through the network or the school system, right? So there's a lot of tools that they have at their disposal to make short-term fixes, long-term fixes, but they're always, we work very closely with the school district to provide real-time information about what development we're forecasting. The minute we hear about a proposed development of scale, of meaning, right, not just one single-family home, but something of meaning, we immediately transmit that to them. When we get, you know, a project guidance in, which is usually speculative, then they track that, right? And because development of scale takes five to 10 years to actually be built before people show up, they're able to then roll that into their models and account for that in how they do their planning.
Got it.
So that's the school districts, right? We could have a whole meeting just on that. I'm happy to talk offline if you want to about that. You know, I've learned a lot from them over the years. That one presentation, I'll send you the link to it, was really good, really helpful to understand how they do their capital planning.
Yeah, that would be fantastic because then we'll get a good understanding of it and answer a number of questions. Goes to the next point of it was not related to schools, but to the frontage. Now, for the frontage work, the charges that come and the builders paying, builders of the, this one's paying for that, how forward-looking or how backward-looking are those frontage improvement fees planned? Because if you'd seen, if you'd asked me 10 years ago, what would you like for your frontage, it would be very different from what I'm thinking right now because of a lot of focus on energy efficiency and all of those things that come up and add costs or remove costs and all of those things. So how current is that, is that in the impact fees?
Yeah, that's a great question. So frontage improvements are required on certain types of development, so if there's an eight-lot short plot that is coming in, they're required to provide, to meet our standards. So if they have any internal roads, they have to meet our engineering details and our public work standards, as well as provide their frontage for the road that they're accessing from, and that's something that the developer pays for and installs, and then there's a warranty period on it. And if it's a, I'm sorry, a public road, then that becomes the city's. There's a very rigorous inspection process, both during construction, and then there's processes, same thing with stormwater system, that we go back and make sure that the asset's functioning like we need it to before it is formally the city's to take on for the lifespan of that asset.
I see.
And beyond, yeah.
Okay, okay. Great. And last, can we go back to that Nolan and Dolan slide?
I'll pull it back up first. I was going to our fee schedule so I could answer the question about our commercial impact fees. I just wanted to look it up.
When I saw the chair having a pen and Sayed having a pen, I'm like, I forget to bring a pen every time, so I would have gone through it down. Yeah, there we go. So here, this was the one that I was really struggling with, the nexus and proportionality, right? Samamish was 50,000 people at one point. Klhane's annexation made it 6,6,000. We are now looking further than that and all of those things. So proportionality changes accordingly, does it not? Or I'm struggling to find out what would be the parameters of proportionality, and I cannot not think of population as part of the proportionality, or am I wrong about
Part of it is the, I would say the proportionality piece of it comes up often in review of applications in terms of implementing our standards, and there's a whole section, I can't remember what, it's in chapter seven of our standards, but it actually addresses, you know, when an applicant comes in, for example, and they're developing off of a road, a local road, but it's not, the road is not built to our standards, there's a proportionality, for example, that they, that developer has to install. We can't require them to improve two miles of roadway, right? It's really what's... It's really what's in front of their home. And then for traffic, it also is looking at impacts from that particular development. We can't utilize impact fees, for example, or mitigation requirements for something that's already failing. So if we have an intersection that's already failing, that new development, that they don't pay for that. So I'm trying to think of some other examples of nexus.
Before we go for the, sorry, and I won't take a lot of the time, but that's again very subjective, right? Because the, the intersection may be failing, maybe failing, and then I'm coming in and I'm putting up something over there as a builder and coming, and a developer, I'm coming and putting something over there which completely fails that intersection, right? What was probably going to take a lot more time is now accelerated to an immediate failure because of what I've brought in at that time. That's what I was going with.
Oh, okay. That is solved in a few different ways, but it's, it's really the concurrency evaluation. And when it is done is when an applicant first comes in. So if they, a developer is proposing a new development and a level of intersection is failing because of, it, they have to, that's part of why we have concurrency so that the level of service is maintained. And if the development is not able to, doesn't pass concurrency, and there's a few different options. They can mitigate, they can pay the proportional share, or they can figure out something else with their development, right, with that land. So there's a few different ways, but that's why that, one of many tools that we have in our development review process.
And, and that explains the individualized determination clause in, in that whole thing. Is that, is that right? It says some sort of individualized determination, because then there is not a one-size-fits-all kind of an approach that you can take, but it will.
And each jurisdiction has an opportunity to set their level of service, right?
Got it.
Can I, can I, can I stay on that subject? Because back to your, your response to Ajay's question about proportionality. You cannot tie it into the immediate vicinity or the frontage improvement. That's only a part of it. But when a project impacting a, an intersection quarter mile away, that doesn't apply. I think that proportionality, at least in, in my understanding of what, what it's related to, is the size of the project that, and the magnitude of the impact of the project is nothing to do with the frontage improvement. That's my take on it.
But, and that's true too, right? Because it, it doesn't, as we are changing the paradigm, we make it more walkable, the city more accessible for families to be able to go to a transit center which is not yet there, but is going to come. And we don't know what else is going to happen as, as Sound Transit builds that train system towards Redmond, and we have all of those things. It, it does come, and I know she's snickering at that, but but it does come to that point, right? We, we, we don't know what we don't know. And it could, it could change. If we follow this to the T, doesn't that, aren't we setting ourselves up for failure in that?
Well, I think there, there's a lot of great policy and code that we have that, that sets us up for nexus and proportionality. I gave one example of frontage improvements. The other, the other example is, is traffic impact analysis and what we look at in terms of the impacts from that development. Likely a short plot with five additional homes is probably not going to make, you know, an impact for the most part. If we're looking at something that is a larger development, it may make an impact in terms of, it may pass concurrency, but we might look at some other things that we need to look at in terms of what they would need to provide for the community in terms of impacts. So there's a whole lot of, that comes in with some of the other tools that we're looking at in terms of the traffic impact analysis that looks at a whole lot of different things too. But it has to be nexus and proportionality there, yeah.
And historically, legal, all the legal challenges that over the years cities have been experiencing had to do exactly with these two, with these two buzzwords, the nexus and proportionality.
Absolutely. However, I will point out that we usually, I, I'm not aware of an instance where we've seen a challenge by a developer related to impact fees, which are generally accepted by the development industry. They have an opportunity to participate, and maybe we'll hear from them as part of our public hearing on setting our impact fees. Usually where the tension is, is in actual mitigation requirements in terms of building out a turn pocket or putting in a different type of sidewalk or something. That's usually where the tension is, and a developer doesn't want to do it. The city's saying you have to do it, and a community member is saying they're not doing enough. So it lies between those, those three, right, is where developer doesn't want to do anything beyond pay the impact fees, and they say, we're already paying the impact fees, why do we have to do this? And then the community members who really want to, you know, see additional improvements made, who may not understand nexus and proportionality, think that that developer should be doing way more than what they're doing. And then there's what the city is requiring, which is us applying nexus and proportionality, using our individualized judgment for that project to really try to address something that is, that is related to that project specifically, right? And that's usually where we land. So we're, we're kind of caught in the middle of it, and oftentimes it plays out in a form of an appeal with a hearing examiner related to SEPA, because that is where you generally apply mitigation requirements that come from concurrency analysis. We've had several of those cases here over the years in other cities I've worked in. And, you know, it, it really depends, we end up with traffic engineers that are basically dueling in front of the hearing examiner, and that's, that's resolved by the hearing examiner. Sometimes they go to Superior Court. We have seen that as well.
So can I just follow that? If, if the development does not cause an intersection to fail, but degrades the performance, can the city still require a turn pocket or something be done? Or is it only when it causes a failure of the level of service? Because I mean, you could easily have an intersection that's quiet and is way, doesn't even come into the realm of, and then you add a big development next to it, and you go down 100 yards and you've got a little intersection that all of a sudden is overwhelmed, but maybe it doesn't go over the line to being a failure?
And I think, again, this is a great question for the slide, but it comes down to the, the proportionality of the impact, right? So a bigger subdivision, of course, it's going to have all these other tools that we're going to look at, like a traffic impact analysis. It might have SEPA. It might require EIS. So those are where all of those things would be mitigated.
Just wanted to add one thing to that too, is that we, we are being pushed by, by the state, by PSRC to move to more of a multimodal transportation planning framework. And we, we then have the ability through the, the transportation analysis and SEPA to not just look at intersection level of service, but to then also look more widely at some of the other components of multimodal service. We could look at things like safety, like pedestrian, you know, there's other things that aren't just related to the intersection level of service. And most often, the, the mitigation components that we see are, come in the form of safety or in terms of pedestrian improvements that might make it a more friendly multimodal environment.
Okay. Just to add on that really quick, the policies that are in our comprehensive plan and transportation master plan, I mean, that's really where a lot of it starts for the city. And those are, those are key as well in terms of being able to align a development with these, this vision, right, that the community wants.
John, have you had enough time to think about it?
Yes. In fact, the conversation has sort of backed into the issue that I wanted to get on the table. And that is, in the very, very large picture, residential impact fees are pretty straightforward. They're published, everybody understands them. What might not be as well-understood is, and you've touched on this in a number of different ways, is a large development, a big plat, big commercial development. They're going to pay not only the, the impact, the residential impact fees that are on the books, but they're going to be building right away sidewalks. All sorts of things. Depending on the size of the project, they could be investing millions and millions of dollars in order to build out their project, all driven by SEPA concurrency, developer agreements. So I just wanted to, to lay that out, that we're not thinking of impact fees as just what's on the books for a single-family residential. Sure that single restaurant might not directly be paying residential impact fees, but there are other mitigations that it may have to absorb to make the city whole. Is that a fair statement? And then my editorial goes back to the transportation improvement plan is let's ban sidewalks to nowhere, those one-offs in a residential area that get built out because of old frontage improvement policy. Figure out a better way to manage that. Thanks.
Just, just really quickly on, on that, and we would love the, the feedback as we start the work on our update to our public work standards. So that's an opportunity for us to look at things in a little bit different way for that.
So I just want to make sure, I just looked at the fee schedule, and we do not have in the current fee schedule listed impact fees for commercial. Yeah, nothing. My, my recollection on the, one of the last developments we worked on that was, you know, it comes in the form of the transportation analysis that goes along with the construction and then the actual tenant improvements to, to either finish out the space when it's a, a new space or the tenant improvements for a, a new use in an existing space. And the traffic analysis that goes along with that is where the mitigation measures are then applied. And that can come in the form of, I believe there's, and I, I don't want to misspeak here, so we're going to have to look into this a little bit and report back, but I believe there's a cash payment component to that, where at times there is a noted impact. And it's kind of like a custom impact fee that goes along with the, the, the tenant improvement and based on the occupancy proposal for that space. So it's, because the challenge there is when you build out a commercial building or a commercial space, you build the, the shell. You don't necessarily know who your tenants are going to be. Then the tenants come in and then end up occupying your, your, the space, and they, they end up customizing the space for each tenant.
Suda.
I think in the presentation, by the way, it's a long presentation, so I was like, yeah, that's it done. It's, thank you though, I appreciate that. So the developer or the builder won't pay, they will pay the impact fees before they get the permits? Is that true, David? That's what you kind of mentioned.
Yeah, they're, they're required to pay impact fees before permits.
Okay. Is there a contention? Go ahead.
True. However, they can record a covenant to the title of the property. So basically, they have to pay the impact fee. But there is a commitment to paying the impact fee that can be filed that then obligates the property before sale, before occupancy or sale to, to pay the fee. So this is a recent change in state law that was in response to COVID recovery. There's been a bunch of changes over the years where it's become more and more lenient for credit, credit builders who are, who are cash-strapped, don't have a lot of money.
Right, okay.
That want to get it done, and that at the point where it's sold, they then can collect that, those dollars in escrow and provide that to the city at the point the covenant is. So basically.
They have an option then?
Yes, they have that option. And really, I'd say it's 50/50 as we're seeing it now. You know, it depends. We're seeing some builders come in that are more local builders that are a cash operation. We're seeing publicly traded national builders that tend to defer it. And I think that, that abates some of the risk. If the project goes sideways, they don't, they haven't spent all those dollars getting permits.
Yep. Okay, thank you. The next question I have is the Issaquah School District, it's one of your slides. It said they have zero impact fees? I was like, so is it because they have a lot of money or, I'm a bit confused on that, David?
That has to do with enrollment forecasts and adequacy of facilities to support their longer-term enrollment forecasts. And forecasted growth.
Gotcha. So they're like, okay, the status quo, kind of.
Right. They have, they are making basically the determination that based on their level of service, which comes in the form of classroom sizes and the number of classrooms per school based on the different grades and cohorts that they're seeing, that they are not forecasting the need for major investment beyond those investments they already have underway, which in part is the construction of a new high school down at Providence Heights, where the, yeah, where they're proposing to build the new school.
Awesome. In one of the slides, you mentioned that Samamish gets the highest impact fees because of the 25% or something?
Or the school districts, correct. So back in 2022, I think, 2023, it could be somewhere in that timeframe, the city council modified the city's codified formula in order to collect some additional revenue for the school districts. And we have a different, so basically there's a formula that identifies what the cost is per student to provide education, and that then is assigned to the student generation rates for different types of development. So let's say you're building a new single-family home, there's a factor applied, I don't really know what it is, but let's say two. Well, then it's multiplied by two, and then it is given a, a, a reduction to correspond to what the developer share is and what the local share is. And in most, in all the cities in King County, except for Samamish, the local share is 50%, whereas in Samamish, the local share is 25%.
Okay.
So if the builder builds the same house, one in Issaquah and one in, let's say, Samamish, they pay more in Samamish than in Issaquah?
Orinckin County, correct.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, the last one is, some of these fees are going to go to the transit enhancement, right? So there is more buses for us? It's a personal favor I'm asking.
That program is, is focusing this year on mobility hubs and looking at nearside, farside optimization for the bus stops, so working with King County to possibly move where they're located on the intersection. Our transportation planners, like I said, are working on the mobility hubs. We would like to have standards that will be tied into our public work standards update. And they're also looking at implementing and reviewing, improving essentially accessibility for our bus stops as well. And ideally creating some standards around bus stops. Metro has some, so we'll be, of course, working very closely with Metro, but that's that program.
Go ahead, Neil.
I just had a, I had a more elemental or basic question, but essentially, impact fees are collected for the city to sort of offset the, 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 like, the impacts of construction in the surrounding area or just a little bit of clarification I'd like around that?
Yeah, I'd say it's to offset the impact that, that new people arriving in the city brings. So when there are new residents that arrive and the city's population grows, that there is an, an impact on the city's ability to provide the level and maintain the level of service that we have set with our planning, our comprehensive plan. So that, what, what that's doing is it's paying its proportional share to make capital infrastructure improvements, like buying property for parks, building new roads, all those things that go along with that. And the idea is that development pays for development. Now, there's different forms of that, and it, and it doesn't always pencil out that way. Sometimes development pays for, depending on the cycle, more than its share of development, and we've seen that happen. Sometimes development pays for less than its share. Just, it just depends because of how impact fees work. It's a, it's a formulated per unit fee. And not all development is exactly the same. So it just varies a little. We're trying to, on average, you know, try and make it pencil out.
Okay, so this money collected from impact fees is, is like in a separate bucket, and it's used for select projects to, you know, make this level of service the, what it needs to be, right? Okay. And also, I think you mentioned that the school districts, they base, they base off their impact fees on like their projected enrollments? So that, that changes from year to year, right? Or just annually?
Correct, and they do it every year. So it's a process that they, they repeat every year. They have the, like Washington District, for example, has in-house demographers. They also have consultant demographers. And they independently do their, their analysis, and then they compare numbers, right? And that's one way to make sure that they're, they're doing their forecasts, forecasting right. They, they then use those numbers to predict how much space they're going to need to maintain their levels of service, their classroom sizes. They have the ability to move students around and add temporary measures like portables, although we prefer that doesn't happen. The challenge is, is that a school district cannot allow its classroom sizes to dip too, too far below what the specified level of service is, because then the district because then the district is not going to be collecting enough money to operate correctly. And that's when you start hearing about school districts closing schools. So it's really a challenge because there is a certain perception in the community that, you know, if we don't grow and we don't allow new people to come in and have new students in our schools, then we'll have smaller classroom sizes. But what that really means is that the school districts are going to go through a consolidation process whereby they look to optimize costs and choose which schools to close. So you really want to try to forecast growth and manage growth around optimizing the use of existing classroom spaces that you have without having to bus people around or move them around. That's part of the whole process, but I think it's really important to understand that if the population dips down, it doesn't mean that you're going to have smaller classroom sizes. It simply means that the school district is going to go through a consolidation process and close schools.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a list of questions. Not a single one of them is about the school district. I don't think I saw on here, how do our proposed impact fees compare to neighboring cities? Issaquah, Bellevue, Redmond? I mean, I recall a time when we used to tout that we had the highest impact fees and blah, 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 right, whatever. But I'm just curious with the new proposed ones, how do they compare?
Yes, we have not looked, because we're not done with the formula yet. Our current impact fees, I received last year a breakdown of all the different jurisdictions, including parks and transportation and schools and other fees that are collected. And we stack up right on the top median, is that the right statistical term?
I know what you meant.
There's got to be a term for that.
Top quartile.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good, anyway.
And we're not the highest, but we're not by any means down on the lower end.
Yeah, I think that's.
Mark, have those numbers if you wanted to hear.
I think that at some point, that should be included in the future, some future presentation for public to see that. Because I get what you're saying, but I think people might want to know that.
We will definitely, following the workshop and following confirmation that we're going down the right path with the model, calculate out all the proposed impact fees, and we will look abroad, you know, around at what other cities are doing. Now, all the other cities are, I was in a regional meeting today with all the cities, and they all were saying that they're way behind on this, that this is something that, you know, we have so much to do regarding housing, that calculating impact fees is just another thing that we got to do. So they're all working on it at the same time, and we might not have the complete breakup of that. Because like, for example, and I don't know that they're not, but Issaquah might be behind on it, and we don't know what they're going to propose.
Can you, I'm sorry, these are not in a great order. I've always been a little bit curious about, so if a significant development, they contribute their impact fees that in theory have to be spent on capital improvements related to that development within six years, what kind of controls are in place to make sure that the city council, really, but the city doesn't decide, well, we're not going to make those improvements, we're going to take the dollars and do something else? It's still a capital improvement, but it's not really being used for the purpose it was intended to be used for, which is improvements related to that significant development? Is there anything in place to kind of have some control over that or some, you know, impact? Or I'm sorry, some, you know, consequence for the city?
I believe so. If the developer has an immediate impact, right? There's all those different ways that they have to mitigate within the six years. There's also, I, we'll get back to you probably on the list, but I, my recollection from the methodology for the calculations is that it looks at lists, comprehensive lists as well in terms of the capital project list.
I guess what I'm thinking is, let me be more specific. So we have several developments, they contribute their impact fees, they go into a pot. You know, we have our capital improvements plan, transportation plan, and on that plan, we have a bunch of million-dollar improvements, and then we also have Sahali Way widening. And if the city council decides we're going to spend every penny we have on Sahali Way widening, all the rest of those projects become unfunded, right? So I just wonder, to what extent? Because people in the community would expect that when we say development pays for development, that the dollars that get contributed through the impact fees are spent on mitigations related to that development, not something on the other side of town. Is that really true or not?
I will have to get back to you on that one. I want to make sure we check with the team, but there's the immediate improvements that they would have to mitigate, right? And when it's concurrency related, it has to be done in six years, right? Whether that's part of something that's in our plan that we've identified already, when they pay with a proportionate share, or they're doing it themselves. There's, but the impact fees are restricted, and it's based on, I believe, what's the list that's in our comprehensive plan. I want to double check on that. And each project has its proportionate share. So some projects are just exempt from utilizing impact fees. The details should be in our six-year tip, and it's usually broken down. It talks about if a project is funded by real estate excise tax or impact fees or both. But there's a proportionate share that I think is complex to figure out. I know the consulting teams are working on that formula and what that exact percentages that could be utilized for that project, if that makes sense. And some cities have different service areas for how that can be utilized. My understanding is Sammamish has, it's the whole city, so.
Yeah. I guess the higher elevation altitude picture of it is, in a time of financial difficulty? There's probably a better word. The question of what things get done and don't get done and how those impact fees get spent could be more important to members of the community than other times.
Also, there are some, there have been quite a number of cases that developer had to go through legal means to ask for reimbursement if the project that was in the CIP was not developed, and his proportionate share was sitting there and not doing anything. He had the right to go back and ask for reimbursement.
There is a limitation on utilization for the impacted SEPA fees as well. We'll have to get back to you on, I can't remember the years off the top of my head. I think it's 10, yeah.
I believe I saw ADUs are excluded. Is that correct? And then it looked to me like what you described for calculations for affordable units was based on the level of affordability. Is that correct? So if somebody builds a unit that's affordable at 80%, then you use that 80% AMI as a determination? Is there a scale that, is that how that's calculated? Or are some affordable units excluded? Or, I mean, what I'm getting at is, our impact fees are fairly simplistic and blunt to some extent. But it seems like if you want to encourage a little bit affordability or bedroom size or those kinds of things, you could create impact fees that are slightly more granular. Although as a percentage of the overall cost of a lot of this, it's really pretty small. So how much of an incentive it actually is, I'm not sure. But at least for the affordability, it makes sense. But I'm not sure I tracked if I had that right, if there's some kind of a scale there. Or is, are we realistically thinking the only thing that's going to get built is things at 80% AMI affordability?
So currently, the code is limited to 80%. That's all it contemplates. We are looking at an expanded version of that with different income brackets. So it is, in fact, reduced by 80%. So it's not reduced by 20%.
Yeah.
So it's a very deep reduction just for an 80% AMI unit. I don't know what we would do if somebody was proposing a 40% AMI unit and how that would be calculated out. We haven't crossed that bridge yet. However, I do think that, so there's two different things happening. One is, there is the formula to set the impact fee, right? And we're looking at changing that here in response to state law that's telling us we have to break it up by different sized units, whether that's by bedroom numbers or whether that's by square footage. We have to have some formula that actually has a gradation of impact fees, right? So then, in another section of the code where we have the affordable housing components, we have a cross-reference back to the impact fee section that says that impact fees for each of these different categories of, you know, levels of AMI may be reduced correspondingly. As we go through refinement of our code with the town center work that we're doing and with continued updates to implement our comprehensive plan, we would like to retool that section that is, and make it more specific and clear about how reductions occur for affordable units. And we'd like to bring that to the commission, the council, get feedback from the community. You know, because on the one hand, it does, it could help promote different levels of affordability by reducing the overall cost to bring those to market, to bring those to, you know, to occupancy. However, then the cost of, you're still having people arrive, you're still using services in the city. That then is spread across the others that are then paying fees or ratepayers in the city, right? So it's a policy discussion that needs to happen alongside that. Currently, the code already says reduce it by 80%, so that is what has been done. There are, this one is straight, this one comes from the Brownstones West project that is happening, where there are, 10% of the units being built there are at 80% AMI. These are the impact fees that they are paying for those reduced units or those affordable units.
I guess my gut reaction is, without spending a bunch of time thinking about it, when you described that, I thought to myself, given the struggle to build affordable units in Sammamish, if we're serious about it, we should exclude affordable units from impact fees. I mean, if we're already doing 80% anyway, then we're not, the dollars are probably pennies anyway. And, you know, I think at some point, if we want to demonstrate that we're serious, then we should be serious. I don't know. That's just kind of my gut reaction to that. So moving on, do the impact fees have to be the same? Maybe they're already not, do they have to be the same everywhere in the city? So in other words, could we have a set of impact fees in town center that was different than outside of, or I'm picking town center, but, you know, we could say our centers? Can we do that by geographic region based on the something, whether it's zoning or something like that? Or is it got to be a flat, this is how it applies across the entire city?
I believe there's an option to have multiple service areas, but we would need to see what that entails and if that is an option.
It adds complication, but.
That's a great question.
I could see where town center could have something different than, you know, a five-acre plot in the northeast corner of the city.
Right. And so there's a couple of ways to look at that. One is, yes, geographically, where you're located could result in a different impact on city services, right? So transportation assessment zones, service areas, those types of things, that would make sense that you could do that. However, another thing to keep in mind is that we are already essentially doing that in the other component of how capital projects are addressed with development through concurrency and SEPA mitigation, and that there are other improvements that are specific to that geographic area that are being made in response to the findings of a TIR. TIA. So basically, it's that engineering analysis that's happening in addition to the impact fees that are being paid. And that engineering analysis is more project-specific, geographic-specific, that results in different scales of things that come along with it.
I think the last question is, is there any difference if someone builds like a Sahali or something where it's a private and all the roads are private, everything's private? Is there any difference to that? I think the answer is no, but I'm just curious if there's anything. Because either way, the developer is building the infrastructure within the development. It's just that in one version, they have to comply with the city's public work standards, and the other, they don't. So I don't think that the impact fees are any different, but I'm just curious if that's the case.
I don't think it should not.
Do we have guidelines for PUD? I think that that's more or less what Mark is talking about.
Yeah, and we do have provisions for private roads, so there are standards that are just a little bit different than public roads. But yeah, they're not different.
Okay. The last thing I have on my list is, and I mentioned this previously, but I'll say again, I think that from a community consumption standpoint about this topic, we say development pays for development, but I don't think that what that means to people that are not familiar with the topic is the same thing as what we intend to say when we use those words. So if, I think it'd be, even I couldn't necessarily answer the question. If someone said, you know, well, they're building a new development next to me, and it's, you know, it's going to be 50 houses, and you kind of can script out how that goes. And so, but they're paying for all the impacts, right? They got to widen the road, they got to do all this, they got to do all that. I mean, I'm not even sure I can really answer the truth of that because, first off, I understand there's tremendous variability. But if there was a simpler boiled-down way to say, we have nearly the highest impact fees that you can have, and in general, that results in development paying 75% of the cost most of the time of the mitigations that are required or something. Somehow, it would be helpful for people that are, you know, out looking at Facebook pages or whatever, to have a simpler message about what this really means. And I'm not even sure what that message would be, but it's hard to kind of discern when we say development pays for development, what does that really mean? Somebody who doesn't know any better thinks that means the city's off the hook, and that's just not true. So somehow, I think it'd be helpful, certainly for me when people ask, to have a simpler answer to give to people about what that means. That's not a question, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, no, that's something we have been trying to pull together for the town center work we're working on. I think it's really important that we tell that story and are clear about what exactly we mean by that. So definitely, we'll keep working on that one. I don't know that we're going to get to that with the impact fee work that we're doing. But that is a bit of a separate project. I do also want to highlight that with new development, I think this plays out more in the form of single-family than it does in form of multifamily townhomes, those kind of things, that new development, new residential units that are brought online pay higher property taxes than existing units. That the way in which the tax structure works, you can only, there's, I'm going to not do a good job of describing this. So there's people that, and YouTube videos about this that describe it far better than I do, but the opportunity to reset property values and rate and levy rates or, you know, rates is, you know, that when a new development comes online, it's brought in at a different rate than what existing development is at. So new development pays higher taxes generally than existing development. So the house next door that might be brand-new is paying higher taxes than what the older house is paying. I just wanted to highlight that because there's a lot of confusion about that, and sometimes people don't understand that there is a benefit from development that comes with that in terms of tax revenue. It just, it's all about what the taxes are used for and all those things down the line.
Yeah, the impact fees will go to specifically infrastructure-ish improvements, whereas property taxes are just general fund. And I also think, as a side note, as evidenced recently, many people don't really actually understand how their property taxes fund the city, and actually, most of it goes to the state anyway, and, right? So I'd be careful stepping into that puddle because it's pretty deep. Okay, that's it for me. Who else?
I have just one question. Your example over here, at 80% AMI, reduced by 80%, that's not related, is it? Or is this related?
It's the way the code works. I, you know, it's whoever drafted that section of code previously, it's what they wrote.
Okay, so if I was, if I was at 50%, if I was coming in at 50% AMI, is that reduction at 50? And if I'm a builder coming in and building it for 50% AMI, am I going to get only 50% relief?
The code doesn't currently contemplate that. That was, yeah, that's one of the points we're making is that we would love to overhaul that section of code to reflect the new mitigation impact fee schedule and account for the fact that we have now these AMI bands we have to account for, you know, 0 to 30, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 100, 100 to 120, 120 and above, and that we should have corresponding reductions and in some cases exemptions, possibly depending on, you know, the policy direction we're given for affordable housing at different levels of AMI.
That's where your point about the exemption comes into play. Got it.
David, you had a chart showing the impact fees over the last five, six years. Can you go up, please? So what is your explanation? Look at the difference between 2020 and 2021. What happened? What happened?
COVID.
Is that it? I know that that's, is that?
Yeah, it's a big slowdown in units that are actually being brought to occupancy.
But that's curious, because COVID hit, at least in Seattle area, hit in March. We still kept on a clip then, according to this.
Most of the units that were underway, you know, a lot of that is office work and paperwork side, so it's, you know, those payments are still happening, they might have still slowed in their construction, but yeah.
So Ajay, I have a little bit of an answer for you. So the very first mitigation for COVID that were worked out with the governor's office involved construction and keeping capital projects moving.
Got it, which then explains the graph that kept going up.
Audrey, what is the status as far as concurrency update? The concurrency that is right now on a paper and basically using was done in 2019, right? I believe that that's what it is. How often you update the concurrency?
That's a great question.
Are you planning to do it this year?
I will have to get back to you.
Do you know the ratio between the total impact fee collected over the years to the total TIP? What percentage? I believe that is a very small amount, isn't it?
No, not off the top of my head. The impact fee assumptions that we are forecasting for the next six years are, there's a graph in the table for the six-year guide that accompanies the transportation plan, I just don't recall the numbers off the top of my head.
But order of magnitude, I think that, you know, the impact fee is a small portion of the TIP.
Yes.
The threshold as far as traffic impact is right now is 10 trips, right? That's what one of the slideshows.
I believe that's when a TIA would first be required.
Okay, so this is the, let me answer another question before we get into that. I'm glad that the city recognizes that no longer vehicular trip is the basis, is multimodal. How long the city has been using multimodal as a way of calculating the impact? Is that recent?
The, with, because of this, we have policy that just set with the TMP in terms of how the city is envisioning to move towards multimodal, we are looking at not having vehicle trips, but person trips with this update. So the consultant should have more as we bring this back in August.
So I'm assuming that you're going to be asking the developer's consultant to look at and separate and show the differences type of a trip and the mitigation related to that, for vehicular trip, as far as roadway improvement, intersection improvement, as far as non-motorized sidewalk, crosswalk, and so forth. Do you have a formula? How do they deal with it?
I don't have the formula, but our consultant team, I'm sure, will be happy to share their methodology.
But I'm assuming that's the way that it is.
I'm not sure. Yeah, we'll have to get back to you.
Let's see. I'm glad that you're working on, your team working on the pit and bicycle, and as an outcome of that, there is going to be LOS, level of service, and I'm assuming that when we talk about the level of service and concurrency, you have level of service for vehicular traffic, a level of service for pedestrians, and they use that as a part of the impact assessment. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have level service guidelines that are in the TMP, so in terms of that helps direct anything from street typology, and that'll influence our standards, and then, of course, how we approach our different capital projects. In terms of the methodology, we'd have to get back to you in August.
I was talking about mitigation, not the city methodology. So if the project is impacting non-motorized, they should be in a similar fashion, they should be looking at level of service changes, because, let's say that somebody's developing a big residential complex, and that generates so much of pedestrian trips, and therefore, that affects the level of service as far as sidewalk and the stress level and so forth. So are we using the formula coming out of the bicycle and pedestrians as a way of assessing the impact fee of the project?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll have to get back to you.
I'll jump in with a quick one. Can you explain to me one more time how does it work for commercial buildings? Zero?
Yeah, so there is no impact fee stated in the city's fee schedule for commercial. I think in part because commercial is so wide-ranging with regard to the potential range of uses that could go in there. So my understanding is, and I'll have to look this up, and, because we, you know, San Amish does not have a lot of commercial, so our structure here is probably not as developed as some other cities might have that have a lot of commercial, but my understanding is that it is addressed in part, as part of tenant improvements and occupancy, and that there are improvements that need to be made related to concurrency. When you are looking at filling a commercial space, that you are required to report out on the use, the square footage, and then there's trip generation that's run from that, it's run through concurrency, and that there are other system impacts that are addressed through a TIA, where you look at what local geographic impacts might be caused. But I will have to look at sort of how that's done. I don't think we've had a new, larger commercial space built in the city in quite some time, so I can't recall.
So in simpler words, they pay the fee, but in a different way? We just don't call it impact fee?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and again, this is a really good question.
Call it mitigation.
It's more of a mitigation fee.
Because if I go and buy Central Washington at the site, and I build a movie theater, and I start bringing 500 vehicles every hour per trips.
Yep.
I'm not paying any impact fee for that, but if I build a house, I'm going to pay $40,000?
I believe it's done through a transportation mitigation fee that's calculated specific to the use, because there are so many, such a wide range of uses, and what happens is that there are other considerations, like developer contributions in terms of improvements that are made, that ultimately, it's a factor of, and I'm projecting on this or speculating, and I'm going to have to look it up, that it's a factor of the actual improvements that the developer is making in conjunction with what the actual mitigation fee would be, that's calculated based on the number of trips, the use, all those things that go along with that. But we definitely want to look that up and bring that information back to you, and we can make sure to have that available for you when we come back on August 7th.
And you said we will come back to the town center on a different date?
What part of the town center?
Because, impact fees, because in the town center, there are commercial, there are the five or the six on one, so the first floor, there will be no impact fee paid on that, but the developer will pay impact fee on two through six?
Based on the residential units.
Based on the residential units only.
So I want to clarify that and look that up, and come back with a complete answer on how commercial and mixed-use buildings are addressed with regard to impact fees, and we can have that information for you on August 7th.
Because part of the public questions or the public, the things that they addressed to City Council the other day, it was that you took the city's money and you helped the developer build the road, and I'm hearing that that's part of the city's obligation, that what they did was the right thing. They take the money and they build the road for the developer to build the town center. And I know this is a highly political question.
The road, are you referring to Sixth Street?
Fourth? Is it six? Okay.
The city is building its frontage, essentially is our half of the road, because we are the, we own the property just south, right, in terms of the park. And the developer is, it's already built out, the parking and sidewalk and different improvements that they made for their portion of the road, and there's a lot of great information in the development agreement for that, but.
So it's a shared responsibility?
They have a lot of impacts that they have to mitigate, and if that's helpful to bring back some more information about either a specific, you know, development or some examples, I think that might be helpful if we bring back a few different examples.
Because one of the things that Jeff shared with us last week about the traffic impact, that around about, that's like three or four blocks down the road, there will be an impact further down the road because of the town center. But like Mark was asking earlier, because it's further out, they are not obligated to fix that issue. I can create a mess here that will create a mess over there, but because it's further there, I don't have to fix that, I can only fix this.
That depends on the traffic analysis summary. It shows that how much of that development is impacting that roundabout, and it shows if it's significant, then they have to pay their portion of it, even though that is not next to the development.
But that's what I took too, from the definition, what Commissioner Hisham is saying, which is that if I create a mess, and if it's four blocks down the road that messes, I'm no longer responsible for the mess, because although I would have, let's take the example of his movie theater thing. I've created the movie theater that's causing a mess, there is a movie screening time just after school lets off, and that is causing a block on 37th in Sahale down where it is far away from me, I'm still not responsible for it, although I exacerbated that situation. Isn't that right?
The, something that would create more than 10 trips would require a lot more evaluation, right? So including a traffic impact analysis, SEPA mitigation, we look at things holistically as well, and so as they're evaluating impacts, they look at how things maybe impact pursuant to that type of, an impact in that type of development.
Let me answer it a little bit differently, Ajay. When you look at the residential, you're talking about the production and attraction. A residential unit produces trips, people, they start going there. A commercial is attracting, so you can look at, in that example that Hisham mentioned, the traffic analysis should look at the number of trips coming into the theater, and then based on that, and work with the city to find out what is the mitigation on that. It is not the impact fee, it's a mitigation.
Got it, so that's an attraction thing, which is actually in the opposite direction than what I was bringing.
Exactly.
Okay. I didn't think of that that way. Thank you.
There was a question that I was going to ask, and I know, since Hisham asked that, oh, can we be, on an impact fee, can be a little bit creative and look at, for instance, Mr. Johnson, is that Mr. Johnson, the first speaker that the public, he mentioned about, and I thought he's going that way, but he came short of not really getting to the point that I was going to make. Is there any way that we can tie into the number of bedrooms as a basis for the trips, right, than the total number of units? Is it a no-no, a gross management?
No, no, that's exactly what the legislation is asking us to do. So we're looking at, you know, there were multiple different ways we looked at doing this, one was by bedroom, one was by square footage. So the challenge with bedrooms is that developers and builders of residential units, it's easy to game what you call a bedroom. So, you know, you, and square footage is hard to misrepresent on a plan, so.
In real estate business, I was told that the bedroom, definition of bedroom is a room with a closet. That is a pretty much a standard.
However, it is very easy, it's challenging and nuanced and permitting, because what a builder will do is they'll show a rec room, and then at the very end, before they, then they get a customer, they're finishing the house, they'll build out that rec room and turn it into a bedroom, and they've already paid their impact fee. So what, you know, how do you catch that? It's an administration component, you know, it's an enforcement component. Square footage is a lot easier to go by. So our recommendation for the purpose of implementation, facilitation of implementation is square footage. However, that does play out in terms of unit sizes as they correspond to bedroom counts. There are other tools we can use to really try to promote, you know, two-bedroom, entry-level, affordable housing, I don't mean affordable, market affordable, right, just by simple square footage and bedroom count. I mean, my first house was 880 square feet and two bedrooms. So.
Can we go one step further and go to the lot size?
Ajay, can we interrupt for a motion to extend our meeting to 8:45 and no longer?
Second? It's been moved at second to extend to 8:45. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, thanks.
I'm sorry. He interrupted you.
And he gave you a deadline.
I, you know, so our recommendation is square footage, that's where I think I left off.
What is the possibility of a lot size?
Lot size?
Property size.
I don't think we have data that supports the trip generation or the impact on level of service from lot size.
Because most of the luxury home, they're bigger size, bigger lots, that's why I asked, generally speaking.
Yeah, I don't, we see a lot of five-bedroom McMansions squeezed on the smaller lots than the one that I live on, so I'm not, I do think that the square footage is really the most objective way to do it. I don't know that it incentivizes two bedrooms like we'd like or something, but somewhat.
The consultant will come on August 7th prepared to talk about the different formulas or different methods, I guess, that they considered, and we look forward to that. That's, one of the reasons why we arranged this sort of series, these three-part series, is building background on all these different ways in which we see improvements made to our systems, that can then let you focus on impact fees without so much background at the next meeting on the 7th, and then we can come back finally for a hearing in September, once you're fully informed about how the proposed model works.
Would it be possible to come up with maybe options? Maybe certain options, and this is option number one, advantages and disadvantages, option two, disadvantages and disadvantages?
So we do have a limited budget. We will present, you know, our finding about why we think this is the best approach, and if the commission disagrees and wants to redirect and the majority, you know, makes that finding, I think then we would want to reconsider. However, we've put a lot of work into this, trying to understand the cost implications and the, you know, the effectiveness of implementation, et cetera, and our conclusion was on square footage. We'd be happy to share more information on how we came to that conclusion.
I'd also just point out a comment on that for, I think, people to think about. The impact fees that we set, you know, even if it is $30,000, if they're going to sell a house for 1.5 million, if we change it from 30,000 to 25,000, or 30,000 to 32,000, there's some incentive there, but it's very, it's very limited, I think. We should just kind of keep the perspective of, you know, the context of the numbers and what we're talking about, because we could noodle around with it forever, but in reality, there's only so much we're really actually accomplishing. So I just, I think that's important to remember. We can say we're going to, for example, my suggestion was to eliminate affordable housing from impact fees, I'm still not sure we'll get any affordable housing or not, because it's still such a small dollar figure. So, yeah, whatever we do will only have a limited influence over the outcome.
And my last question, I was looking at what the other cities have done, City of Portland, they're using infill development and give some discount. David, can you elaborate on that? What is the infill development, how that would work in the case that you want to look at that as an option? To encourage infill development, reduce fees for infill development?
Well, we're already doing that in the form of middle housing, so we allow a lot of flexibility for middle housing in the form of infill development. Middle housing is largely seen as infill, it's more flexible, it's easier to fit on sites that are awkwardly shaped or undersized, so there's that. I don't know that we have a problem with infill development happening, whereas in certain neighborhoods in other cities, they might have, development has stalled, and they're not, they're looking for revitalization of certain districts or neighborhoods, they might be trying to promote infill as a method of bringing additional density, bringing a revised or a renewed. a revised or a renewed interest in certain neighborhoods to make transit work, to make other things work where they need the density. We're trying to focus as a community, our density, and we have plans that have been on the books since 2007 to focus our, our density into the town center. Yet at the same time, we have continued to see infill. If you recall the, the graph that showed the number of housing units that have been brought online outside of the town center versus those in the town center, we have the opposite issue where we really need to try to find a way to get town center to develop.
Thank you. Anybody else? David, Audrey, thank you. I, I actually didn't guess that this was going to be this deep of a discussion, so I guess that's a good sign.
Really appreciate all the questions. We're going to watch the tape and find those that we need to bring back and hopefully we'll have most of them answered for the August 7th meeting. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I did want to let you know that the, we're working on the EIS for the town center, we're working on the town center plan. You will likely be seeing the, some additional information on that and be taking up the town center again, likely at the September 18th Planning Commission meeting. So it's a bit, a bit of runway here. We have quite a bit of work to do on the backend and that would include, you know, issuance of an FEIS and issuance of a Planning Commission Version 1 draft down center plan. And we will then proceed with review with the Planning Commission and, you know, into the fall. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of that and what, what to expect. There's not going to be anything on that at the September, the August 7th meeting. That will instead come back in September.
I have this picture of you and tapes, running tapes around. Okay, does anybody have anything else? Anything else from you, David?
Just other than wanted to really say I appreciate the conversation and the questions, you know, there's, this is a very complex topic and one of the reasons why we wanted to have this meeting and conversation and presentation was to help broaden awareness in the community, not, not just with the commission, but in the community about all the things that we do in order to make sure that we provide infrastructure alongside development.
Also, is it going to be online for the, for the people to see this presentation?
Yeah, typically the presentation or the video is posted the next day. Lena does a great job working on that with our IT staff and getting that up.
Takes about a day to move the tape over from here to the YouTube machine. Okay, would somebody move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved to second, then we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Everybody have a nice evening. Thank you.